Public hearings, item 31.
Conduct a public hearing to receive and discuss public input and comment on redistricting and the proposed illustrative plan.
Gunnar, come on up and share with us again.
Good evening, council. Good to see you all. It is a pleasure to be here before you and with the citizens of Mesquite. We are in the next phase of transitioning pursuant to the charter amendment election, the electoral districts here for the city council, from the at-large system that existed previously to the six single-member districts that will be used in elections going forward. As you know, the council worked together with our firm to create an illustrative plan, basically a starting point for the discussion of what the six single-member districts might look like going forward. Though the illustrative plan that the council designated was published, put out on the city's website and in media so that the public could have an opportunity to review it. As you know, we held about two weeks ago two public input sessions, one in Rutherford and one at the Florence Recreation Center. Those were good public meetings. We had some good turnout. Folks came out and gave some good comments. And at this point, we are now moving into the next phase, which is to continue to give the public an opportunity to submit their input and comments, and then also the opportunity to give the council the opportunity to make any revisions or changes that it feels appropriate to the illustrative plan that was designated, or to accept new plans or review alternate plans. There has been one revised plan proposed, and of course, as we move forward towards final adoption, there may be others. So, at this point, I don't know if we have anybody signed up to speak to give public comment tonight.
No, but we are going to have a public hearing anyway, so we'll open that in a few minutes.
Okay. At this point, it's really for the council to consider going forward as a move-forward adoption based on the illustrative plan, any changes or revisions it feels appropriate or would like to see. And of course, if you have any questions for us, we are happy to, or I'm happy to answer those as they come up.
Any questions at this time for Gunnar?
I do, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Gunnar, can you help me with the deviation? Is that something, I'm looking at the summary page. I don't know if you can put that on the projector or not so everybody can follow along with us.
Sure, can you help me out with that? Certainly.
But I'm looking at the deviation specifically from the plan that the council wrote together and got community input on versus the revised plan.
Okay, we can, I have both of those. I may not be able to put them both up at the same time. So if we can look at one and then look at the other.
Yeah, that's fine. And so, if I'm correct, the largest change that's been proposed from the plan that this body did in the very beginning versus the one that was presented today in the pre-meeting, there is a small change between District Four and Five. Is that correct? Is that kind of the significant change?
That is correct. Now, there was not much of a demographic shift associated with that, but that was where the change occurred between the illustrative plan and the illustrative plan revised, as it's labeled.
Okay. And just so we can get it kind of in common speak, is deviation something you try to increase or decrease?
Well, deviation can vary slightly just depending on where the moves you make are. Ultimately, what you want to make sure is that your overall deviation stays within the legal norms. And here, both plans achieve that effect.
Yes.
So, we don't look to necessarily increase, I mean, ideally, what you would want are equal populations across the board.
Across the board, yeah.
You know, unfortunately, in the real world, the way people are distributed, it can be difficult to achieve that.
Right.
So, we don't necessarily look at increasing or decreasing deviation, but we absolutely make sure, I mean, we want as little deviation as possible, and we also make sure that we're within the legal norms.
Okay. So, I think that's a good value said, within the legal parameters, but when available, trying to decrease and get as close to zero as possible. And so, could you compare District Four and Five's deviation, the first plan, and then the plan that was proposed tonight? Did it get better or worse? Did it get farther from zero or closer to zero?
We're still trying to get this on the screen, but I will try to, I have some paper copies here I can look to.
And Gunnar, as you're speaking, if you could kind of get the microphone, get closer to you, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, our deviation, Councilman Casper, for District Four on the proposed illustrative plan, the original plan, is negative .18 percent. And for District Five, it is negative .44 percent. On the revised plan, it is negative 3.434 percent for District Four and 2.95 percent for District Five.
Okay. And that was kind of the only significant change that was proposed in the revised plan, was that area that we were talking about between Four and Five? Is that correct?
Demographic change.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And so, it doesn't necessarily get us closer to that zero deviation that we would hope for, and so, you know, I'm going to have some comments, I think, on, I guess, the motive or why the plan was suggested, but it doesn't seem, based on the data, that the plan gets us closer to the objectives of as little deviation as possible. So, I appreciate you sharing that.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open up the public hearing? Okay, thank you. At this time, we'd like to open up the public hearing on item 31, and I would make a few comments because we've had an illustrative plan, and we've had a couple of open meetings, and we continue to go down this road, and we are still having open meetings on this. And we did present an illustrative plan that we began with several months ago, and, you know, I have been contacted many, many, multiple times, shared this in the earlier meeting, about making some changes to the plan for consideration only. Just asking, can we look at some other ways to look at these districts? And I felt like there was enough comments to me in consideration just to allow our council and for you to weigh in on what, on some of these districts and where they are. There is a line that seems to have been drawn from the very beginning that said, "We don't want any of our council members existing to, anywhere they live or any districts they live in, to be considered during this plan." And I think they've done a great job of that, laying that out initially. And yet, there's always going to be speculation. There's another plan that we had presented, and we can put that up if we have that plan. Do you have that plan?
The revised one?
The revised plan?
The revised one.
So, we can put that up and show there, you know, there has been a request, and I had about 12 to 15 people that contacted me over the last two, three weeks, and just said, "Is there any way we can look at a different layout?" And I said, "I've contacted Gunnar and talked to the city manager as well, and we'll throw you under the bus, but we just," I said, "I would be happy to present this for consideration," which is what we're doing tonight, in terms of, we will point to an address and say, "This councilman lives here, and that councilman lives here, and that's the only reason we're doing that, and we're doing it for reasons about voting and all that." You know, that's going to be out there. That's going to be out there. I'm not telling you tonight that I support this plan or the other plan or any of the plans. We'll have a time to vote for that in the future. But when our citizens come to me, and all of us, and ask, "Would you at least allow us to talk about some of these things?", I felt like it was one, something that I would do as requested. So, you know, it's not a popular decision, once we've gone down this road sometimes, of saying, you know, "Well, why haven't you done this before?" And I felt like it'd be better to bring this out, to my knowledge and talking in pre-meeting, "We're not voting on this tonight. I don't know that we're voting on this or anything else tonight." But we are, we have told you many, many times, we would give you the opportunity to weigh in, and that's what I want to do. I want to hear from our citizens. I want to hear what you have to say, and we'll want to hear from you again. And I know we'll hear from you over the next couple of weeks. It's between this meeting and next meeting. So, at this time, as I mentioned, I'd like to open up the public hearing and I'd like to invite anyone that wishes to speak to come forward. No, this is a revised, it's a little bit of a revised plan.
Gunnar, could you maybe show both and show the changes that were made?
Yeah. We're going to have to do them in succession. I can't show them both at the same time, but we will start, this is going to be the original illustrative plan. Oh, there we go. Okay. Spoke too soon. It's a little smaller, but we can at least.
Let's try, we can go the other way.
I think that little arrow that's coming to the right.
Touch.
Oh, yes, got it. Thank you. I was looking for it. All right, and then one other we can.
So, what you're looking at here is the original illustrative.
Can you get a little bit closer there so they can hear you?
I'm sorry. What you're looking at here is the original illustrative plan on the left side of your screen, and then the revised plan on the right.
Yeah, can you kind of show, oh, you can't really do that. We get with the mouse.
What did you want me to do?
Just up here for this, the one change that's been made.
So, the change between the two maps is, you'll see, between Districts Four and Five, here, there's a straight line along Carver. In District Five, it branches into Four a little bit along New Market, and then follows a natural boundary, which is a creek here to the point.
That clear as mud out there. I know it's probably hard to see. And again, we're not voting on these plans tonight, just purely for an opportunity for you to see something that someone had asked, could we take a look at? Yes, ma'am. Have to give your name and address to the record.
Kathy Clark, 2848 Bell Haven Drive. Will this re-revisement be posted on the site with the same demographics like the first one?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You bet. You already gave your name and, no, you haven't. Name and address tonight.
It's because you know who I am.
Yes, sir, I know.
Sergio Garcia, 1724 Longview, Mesquite, Texas, 75149. Thank you, Mayor and council. As I continue to look at this, I do want to continue to express my view that we should have, of course, balanced districts, compact districts if we can, and as, you know, I know there'll be a revise, there'll be suggestions, but I hope there is good reasoning behind changes, because I know you guys didn't just hire anybody, these guys here. There was a reason you hired them. So, if there's changes, there's probably some really good changes. Why? Not just if we want to make changes to protect anybody or to make sure that people aren't running against one another, but one thing I want to stay away from in our districts is any hint of gerrymandering. All right? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please, sir.
Fernando Rojas, 24, 23 Lagoon Drive. I want to echo the same thing that Sergio said. You know, I know there's all kinds of gossip sometimes when things are going this way, when we're doing redistricting and there's gerrymandering, but I have been hearing some rumors, you know, out there, that some people say that the things are being fixed so that councilmen do not have to run against each other. And if that's not true, that's fine, but that's what I've heard. And I want to make sure that the city doesn't get into a situation where, after we do our redistricting, then we're going to have to have some kind of court fight because of the efforts to gerrymander the city.
Thank you. And yes, I would hope that we were not doing that solely for that one and only purpose. Yes, ma'am. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Audrey Carter. I live in Rollingwood Hills, 205 Woodbridge. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to say that this redistricting and all, it really is over my head. That's not my thing. But what does bother me is councilmen having to run against each other. I don't like that at all. I know I'm not alone in this. I just don't feel it's right. And I look and I see good councilmen on the board, and I just don't agree with that. I don't think it should be. You know, give opportunity if we need fresh councilmen in or whatever, but not to pit councilmen against councilmen. I just, I'm disappointed in that. Okay? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Deborah Morgan, 223 East Kimbrough, Mesquite, 75149. I know council passed a resolution not to take into consideration any council member's address when these maps are being drawn up, and I hope that continues to be a focus.
Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? Seeing no one, I'll come back to the council for any comments. Mr. Casper?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to lay it out there for you guys. I've been a part of the listening tour before we did any of the charter reforms. We did seven different events all across the community. The number-one thing I heard, Ms. Carter, from residents was that we should do term limits. That was actually the most popular item that I heard folks talk about. And a big part of that was to get rid of incumbents so that we didn't sit on here for 14 years like some of our predecessors. And so, when we came to redistricting and when the voters overwhelmingly approved that, my chief objective was that we draw good maps that were fair, that were compact, that meet the legal parameters, and that we don't take into consideration anything that benefits or hurts us. We're just as neutral as we can be about that process. And so, I did make a motion that we exclude our residency from the consideration for the consultants. I didn't want us to have little special districts drawn for us where they were really safe, and so, we'd get reelected until we termed out. I didn't think that was a fair way to do democracy because, frankly, voters should pick politicians. Politicians should not be picking voters. And anything that's done to make it easier so that we win reelection, I think cheats democracy. And so, if we kind of zoom in on the map for us, if you pay attention to New Market, right north of New Market is Walker. That's where Councilman Archer lives, and I endorsed Councilman Archer in his most recent race. I have no qualms with him. And then, south of New Market, where you look at the new map, kind of where Riggs is, that neighborhood is Councilman Burrows. And so, in the revised plan that we never discussed as a body, that no community members have discussed, it now shows up that we've carved two different districts, one for each council member. And frankly, I think that's cheating democracy, and it's doing us favors. It's not doing the voters any favors. And so, that's a big part of the problem, I think. I think when we try to draw these maps not to last for as long as they last until the next census, but we draw them to consider what's beneficial for us today, that's not what the voters approve. And so, frankly, I think the revised map, if there are folks that have been emailing and want to talk about it, hopefully, you come to the next meeting and you talk about why this is so important that we draw maps to help the council right here, because when I look at my colleagues, many of, all of whom I respect, we're all male, six out of seven of us are white, that's not reflective of the community that I know and that I teach at. And so, frankly, I think we can do democracy a lot better, and it should just be up to the voters. And candidates should raise up naturally, organically from crime watch groups, because you know your neighborhood best. We don't know the neighborhood best just because we've been up here. There is nothing special about any one of us, and frankly, I think many of us would make the same decisions that you would just because you're informed and you talk to voters. And so, we don't need special protection. What needs special protection is our elections and a fair process. And so, Mayor, frankly, I'm pretty frustrated. I know there was not ill will, and you were just trying to foster a good conversation, but the real way this should have came forward is through a public hearing, not one of us carrying it forward. And so, I'm pretty frustrated, and I kind of reject that revised plan unless there's overwhelming evidence from that voters are in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments very much. And it is a first-time process for us, and I've always said there's, we're not a perfect, we're not perfect people, so, but we foster communication and discussion. And I tell you what, this, one thing I will say about, for the most part, on this council, we're able to do this. We're able to share with you guys, and you're able to share with us, and I think that's what makes this important. And I think it's what we do, it's what makes what we do important. And quite frankly, I hope this continues. This is what makes Mesquite different from a lot of these communities out there that don't have this, at least, chance to sit down and talk one-on-one and discuss these things. I see a lot of, Mr. Miklos, councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to put a slightly different spin on what my previous colleagues have said. When we started this process and started to have districts, I was hoping that we would have a whole lot of different maps to look at, that we'd have a lot of different options to go through. You know, what about this neighborhood? What about this area? What about 635 being the dividing line? What about 30 being the dividing line? Look at a whole lot of completely different districts. So, before I'm just going to outright reject one map issued to us that we shouldn't even look at, I want to see a lot of maps. I want to see a lot of different maps. I agree with the concept or the idea that these districts will last till at least 2021, when we will have a new census and we will have a new redistricting process again in only three years. But the fact that an additional map was provided, you know, I'm not for the moment going to sit here and try and figure out the motives underneath them. I didn't advance that map, but I don't care. I want to see five maps. I want to see 10 maps. I want to see a vigorous discussion. What I don't want to see is one map put in front of us, and by God, that's the map we better do, or else. Or else. We get to talk about these maps. We get to talk about what the effect is on its communities. We get to talk about which neighborhoods should go with which neighborhoods. We don't get to reject it and say, "One and only map, one map is the map you get, and by God, if you change any of it in any way, shape, or form, I'm going to be disappointed." These are not my maps, or Jeff Casper's maps, or Bruce Archer's maps, or Stan Pickett's maps, the other three over there. This map is your map. I want you to come here and tell us what you want. I want you to tell us what neighborhoods you want in these maps, not us telling you. You come in here and you say, "I want this here, I want that here." This neighborhood historically, Town East, Tropical Streets, Astronaut Streets, Skyline Rugel, Galloway, Rollingwood Hills, they belong together, and not because I represent it at this current moment, but because they've been working together for 40 years. That's the discussion I wanted to have. And if we move some districts and some communities back and forth, well, I think, thank God, we're at least talking about it, instead of having one map drop from heaven, not heaven, from your office, right, your conference room, and that's it. Don't change it, because there's some conspiratorial motive concern with it. I'd like a lot of maps. Hey, y'all want to bring more maps? Bring more maps. I love maps. Maybe we could put a map together with 80 up to 30 and 635, and maybe that would be one district. I'd love to see that district, although, quite frankly, I'd like the district to remain because I love you all as well, and all the way down to Rollingwood Hills, but I'd take any district that I was put into. And whether I ran or not, it'd be the district that the voters chose, that the people chose, not us. We don't know more than you. You know more than us. Come tell us what you want. That's what I have to say.
Mayor, approach him.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, you know, this afternoon, we got together, and it was a pre-meeting. We're looking at this at the very first time. We've had our other map that we've been looking at, and that's the illustrative plan, and then we've got the revised plan. And I want to thank the mayor. I want to thank the mayor because he listens to the people. And I think that's why we're up here, to listen to the people. And if the people have things to bring up to us in regards to the map, why don't we listen to the people? So then, I know Councilman Miklos is talking about maps, maps, and more maps, and I have no problem with that. I do have a problem if we don't want to listen to the people. I do have a problem if we just want to stick with one map and no other map and not listen to the people. We need to listen to what the citizens are saying. So, that's what I stated this afternoon in our pre-council meeting, and I'm going to stick with that, and that we should not be afraid to hear the people and what they have to say. So, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Casper, you have?
Yeah, Mayor. Sure, I don't know if anyone else wants to speak for a first time.
Anybody else want to speak? Councilman Archer?
See if anybody else wanted to go first. Well, thank you, Mayor. It's an important issue, and first, I want to thank Councilman Casper for his recent endorsement. Appreciate that a lot. Thank you. So, when we first started this very historic process in the summer of 2017, it's no surprise or no strange thing that my primary desire for the charter change was to implement, as my esteemed colleague said while I go, term limits, and I'm proud that we, the voters chose to do that. Same member districts I had concerns about, I won't go into all the details about that, but I did support the fact that a number of citizens wanted to have the opportunity to vote on that, and that's why I supported putting that on the ballot. I didn't support it for that May election, but the voters said overwhelmingly that's what they wanted to do. Since that process has begun after the election, I have supported a very open and transparent process. I was a little concerned, disappointed, at our first public hearing over at Florence that we had so few residents there, but I know the weather could have been an issue that night. Later that week, over at Rutherford, we had a much better turnout, which encouraged me, but in the grand scheme of things, we still really have not heard, I think there was maybe 35 or 40 to 45 at the Rutherford meeting, maybe five or six at the Florence meeting. So, we really need to hear a lot more from our residents on these issues. I also concur that I want to see as many plans as possible. I'm certainly at peace with the plan we were looking at here previously the last few weeks. I'm fine with that. I'm fine with new maps that, at least, to be considered, if residents want that to be considered. I was under the impression recently, from what I've heard, that the Mesquite NAACP was going to advance a map for, which I think would be most appropriate, and any other similar types of organizations like that, maybe LULAC or other groups that might want to present a plan, certainly would be open to hearing and seeing those concerns and wishes by those residents as well. So, I just want to make sure that, before this is done, that we've heard from every potential citizen and entity out there to weigh in on this very, very important process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Casper?
Thanks, Mayor. I agree with everything that my colleagues have said, except perhaps the characterization of my position. I, too, want to hear from the public, and I would really enjoy any maps that the public would like to draw that are independent of the ones that have been presented. What I am skeptical of is maps that we draw for ourselves that were presented today in the pre-meeting that just so happened to carve out two safe districts for two existing incumbents who aren't termed out. That part, I think, is interesting. If we're looking for community input, it wouldn't be the day of the public hearing so that Ms. Clark has to ask if it's going to be posted online. That's not a fair way to do a public hearing, whereas we have had one map that has gone through an entire month, many-month-long process and been vetted by different public hearings. And so, we can have new maps, and I encourage interest groups like Councilman Archer said, I encourage residents to produce maps, but I frankly, I've heard from colleagues a lot on their views and what maps they would like, but we're not always going to be on this dais, and I think it's important that the community draws the maps and not just us. Thank you.
And, yes, sir, Mr. Miklos.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to make sure that the facts are clear. The only justification for the deviation between the two maps that was stated at the meeting was so that council members didn't have to run against each other. That was the only objective of changing the map from what it was to its revised plan. And as Mr. Casper pointed out in his conversations with council that was hired for this, it actually undermined the ob- and our duty to the voters is to create a system for the future, not for each other.
Thank you. Mr. Ross, Deputy Mayor?
Well, the new map directly affects me and Councilman Archer. And so, I just want to let, you know, I'm good with whatever plan that we finally decide. But, you know, if the voters, if the public shows up in support, and we get an overwhelming amount of people that want that, I mean, bring your maps here. That's what we're here for. So, you know, I'll support whatever the majority wants as far as the public. But I agree with Councilman Casper and Councilman Noche, you know. I don't want to see anything specially drawn for me, you know, so that I might not have to run against Mr. Archer. That's the last thing I want. So, you know, whatever we decide at the end of this, you know, I'm good with.
You know, we've had more conversation probably tonight than we had at the other opening. Yeah, they're all shaking their heads, yes. So, you know, I'll put it out there, so social media can get buzzing tonight. Yes, I was asked, "Would you present something for us, Mayor?" And I did. You know what? I did, for whatever reasons, for whatever things we want to talk about and say. But I tell you what we need, and you've heard from it tonight, we need more conversation about these things. We need to talk about these things. We need to hear about these things. And I hope this challenges all of us in the next few weeks, that we can work through this. We'll get through this. We'll get through this process. I agree with basically everything that's also been said tonight, and I was fine with the other plan as well. But, you know, sometimes we get asked things, and it puts us out of our comfort zone, because I can tell you, it's not a lot of fun sitting in this seat tonight. I can promise you that. And that's okay. You know what? That's okay. I appreciate all that all of you all do on this dais, and all of you guys, many of you come every meeting and share with us. And so, I encourage you to get out there, stir it up a little bit. Let's see if we can't get the original ones great, and if there's something else we want to do, let's look at that, too. So, I don't think we have a motion for anything tonight, so...
Mayor, I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that we may can enlau this, but perhaps tonight, me and Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Burrows just have armless contests and figure it all out tonight. I don't know, you know?
Well, you know, I think what the citizens that brought this up to you, basically just saying, "Both of these men are doing a great job," and I think that's what they brought up to you. And so, that was their thinking, that was their, of what they're sharing with you. Because a case could be made on the other side, too, that maps were probably, with an underlying current, drawn up in such a way, so we can get both of them against each other and get rid of one of them.
Yes, sir.
That could happen, too. Why not bring that up? Because that's just, you know... But I think listening to the people, continuing to hear them, I think is a good thing.
All right, Mr. Casper, I'll give you a last word.
Yeah, I wasn't going to have a last word until that last accusation was made. We drew it together as a body. It went through public hearing after public hearing. Maps weren't drawn with consideration of where any of us live. That was the point. And so, that wasn't a part of our consultants' agenda. In fact, they were forbidden from even considering household residents. And so, I can blankly reject the idea that maps were drawn by this body, including your vote, to put anybody against each other.
So, none of us should take offense, then? I'm just bringing up that it could have been an underlying current to do that.
But it wasn't.
But it wasn't. All right. See, I told you I'd get these guys talking, didn't I? All right. If there's nothing else on this side, then we'll move on and try to get the rest of our agenda done tonight.